Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. The time is 6:30 PM. I'm John Dwanzik, and this is the regular meeting of the Avon Lake Board of Municipal Utilities. With me on the board tonight are, from my left, Mr. Mondello and Mr. Rush, and on my right, Mr. Ricky and Mrs. Schnabel. Tonight's meeting is being livestreamed on Facebook and YouTube. And there's an opportunity for public input on each of those venues. Mr. Kaminsky, who is sitting at the table at the end, he's a facility, he's an asset manager. He will be acting in the place of the usual occupant of that chair to kind of be our facilitator in this meeting. Also, from staff tonight is Chief Utilities Executive, Mr. Monroe, and Chief Business and Financial Coordinator, Mr. Bill Logan, also at the table. Lastly, at the table, at the opposite end, is outside counsel, Mr. Anthony Coyne. And joining us tonight is Officer Riggs from the Avon Lake Police Department. And we have a guest by the name of Mr. Mosher in the audience. Let's see. All we have, since we have a full quorum here, all motions made will be by, require, I should say, a vote of three or more to pass. And all votes will be taken by voice vote with the exception of motion to go into executive session, which will be taken by roll call vote. Mr. Rush, is that it?
Yes.
I think I got everything. Okay. So moving on from the call to order, let's go into the approval of minutes for the January 7th meeting. Are there any comments on that? Mr. Ricky?
Yes, I'd like to add a couple lines to the end of page three, second paragraph. And I will read what I'd like to have added. Mr. Zimmerman continued his, with a diatribe directed at members Ricky and Schnabel threatening lawsuits. He concluded by calling member Ricky "an old dumb piece of shit," period. And that's quote unquote.
Mr. Ricky, of course, we made a record of your objection to that, but we do not ordinarily include profanity in the, you know, official minutes of the board. But I will open the discussion to the board, whether they would like to add verbatim what Mr. Ricky is requesting, or is there another course of action? Anyone on the board have an opinion? Mr. Ricky?
Yeah, I just want to say I'd like the board to confirm that they have viewed the video or recall from last meeting that this is in fact accurate. I've looked at the video three times and believe this is accurate.
I will agree that it's accurate.
So, sorry, Mrs. Schnabel.
I will agree that it is accurate.
Okay, I have not viewed the video, and I don't recall hearing that, not denying it. But again, in the interest of decorum, which the aforementioned Mr. Zimmerman thinks is not necessary, I think the general position of this organization would be that we would not include profanity unnecessarily in the minutes, but may I hear from the other board members?
I think it'd be summarized with asterisks or, you know, describing the word differently or inferring to it as expletive.
Any other thoughts on that? Expletive or S, star, 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 or as your phone might, you know, do it if you were to happen to dictate such a word in your phone. Mr. Mondello, any opinion?
We'll just print with expletive.
Pardon me?
With expletive.
The word expletive?
It's fine.
Mr. Ricky?
That's fine.
Okay. And this way, I think we are being the bigger people here and not, you know, going low because somebody else went low.
Well, one last comment is, you know, of course, they have their three minutes, but we should keep the expletives out of that three minutes as well. Freedom of speech is one thing, but again, decorum is what we're talking about here, and I think that goes both ways. It should be emphasized to the speakers that that's what we expect as well.
Okay. Mr. Coyne, while you're here, you can start earning your money. Mr. Zimmerman asserts that he has no requirement of decorum as a speaker, you know, so he could yell "fire" in a crowded room, I guess, any number of things that would normally be disallowed in polite discourse. What's your legal opinion on that?
As chair, you could require that he only speaks through you as the chairman of the board. And if you feel he is out of line with his comments, you could at least point it out to him. As it relates to the minutes, the minutes are not verbatim minutes. They are a summary of the minutes of the meeting. And because of technology now, you have live streaming videos available, so they have to think of their conduct, which is out there. So, but you could, you could certainly raise it to them, but he does have certain First Amendment rights.
So, in other words, you would tend to support what he said, that he can say whatever he wants?
Not whatever he wants, but if he gets threatening, that's another issue, too. And he seems to be aggravated when he's talking. So, I think pointing out to him to keep his comments, you know, professionally and directed to a matter on the agenda. You know, some, some public boards are now actually limiting some of the public comment to what's on the agenda. So, for what it's worth, that's something to keep in mind if he starts going off. Because, you know, there were comments about the city council or things going on that have nothing to do with this board. You could, you could rein that in somewhat.
He did, I think, also assert, and I think Mr. Phillips may also have asserted that they can say whatever they want, talk about, you know, the phase of the moon or anything else they want, they're entitled to do that.
Well, again, we could discuss.
We, as a board, we're constitutional scholars.
We could certainly could discuss this further, because you do have the right to establish some of your procedures. You do have a limitation of minutes that the public can address. So, you could do some of that. We could talk about that if you'd like.
Right. Okay. Well, generally, the limitation of minutes can be upheld, and its intention is that people would like, put their best foot forward and make their point, and other people would have a turn, so.
Right. I mean, the minutes are to keep a record that the meeting occurred, particularly when votes take place, that those are recorded, that they're voted upon in public, you know, proceedings, and that the motions were made, and that you identify, like when you go through your golden rod sheets, you go down line items so that you're, if there's an issue that has to be raised, you identify it. And it's so you can go back and look at it, as opposed to, you know, watching a whole video.
Right, right. Okay. Questions from Mr. Coyne on that? Are we all clear on it? So, go ahead, Mr. Rush.
I would only suggest that maybe starting tonight, when we ask the, for public comment, that we ask them to address the chair.
Okay.
That we can start that immediately.
Okay. Now, we have the matter of revision to the minutes as requested by board member Ricky. Mr. Ricky, if you're okay with replacing the expletive with, or, you know, the actual expletive with the word expletive?
That's fine.
Okay, would you like to make that motion? I guess that's a board motion there, Mr. Rush.
I think as long as because we're approving the minutes, we can.
Amend them as.
At least western.
Correct. Okay. Mr. Monroe, please amend as the board has discussed, and we will then consider the minutes to be, well, you'll bring it back the next time, and we'll review the revised minutes that, that will be have done in the past.
Typically not. Typically, when there's a request to change, that's revised, that it's revised as stated.
Okay. So, anyone on the board object to that? Okay, then we will consider them approved with the revision as discussed by the board. Okay, thank you. Not a normal thing, we would debate like that, you know, but it's an unusual circumstance. Let's see. Next item is the aforementioned public speakers. First of all, Mr. Kaminsky, is there anyone in cyber world that wishes to make a point?
No comments at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. In the audience, Mr. Mosher, do you wish to make three-minute comment?
Yes, I do.
Step forward. Please address the chair.
Chair. Hello. My name is Gregory James Mosher. I'm a husband, father, and a citizen of Avon Lake. I live at 125 Ashwood Drive, Avon Lake, Ohio. I served my state and country in the Ohio National Guard from 1999 to 2004. I had the honor to serve the citizens of Avon Lake from 2012 to 2023 in many roles while employed by the City of Avon Lake at the Department of Municipal Utilities, of which you are public representatives. I was first brought on by Todd Youngson in 2012 as a temporary lab intern, much like a seasonal summer help kid, to run various tests and provide data for an ongoing EPA expansion study program, while simultaneously finishing my Bachelor of Science degree in geology at Cleveland State University. At the end of that expansion study, the water plant janitor, Dale Savowski, who had just earned his wastewater one license, moved to become wastewater, wastewater operator, and the position of janitor opened. I jumped at the opportunity to start a new career in public service and applied for the open janitor position. Under the encouragement and the mentorship of the plant manager, Steve Heimlich, and the senior operator, Bill Simon, I began to work on attaining an Ohio Water Supply One license while working as the water plant janitor. A year and a half later, when John Belishak retired, I, a water supply operator slot opened up. I interviewed and was fortunate enough to be selected to become a water plant operator, where I attained my Ohio Water Supply Class Two and Class Three licenses in rapid succession. I would like it to be known at this time that I have a 12-year historical record of texts, emails, photos, videos, and audio recordings that substantiate several issues and problems that I have witnessed at the water plant, and clearly indicates the historically acceptable tone and nature of my working relationship with both Greg Geronich and Robert Kaminsky, also known as Bobby. My record of communication expands over the time period of my advancement through the utility as well as theirs. To the best of my recollection, it was in late 2022 when Greg Geronich began apparently becoming concerned with my behavior and working habits and abilities. Instead of going through the union as our contract dictates, he should, dictated that he should, he waited until after I had worked the 12-hour night shift to approach me with his concerns. Subsequent meetings about my behavior or performance were always held after a shift, and usually after a succession of added 12-hour overtime shifts because management and the administration had failed to step the plant properly since well before COVID. This is only one problem, in my opinion, that details the collective, and it details the collective incompetence of Rob, Greg, and Bobby. And I'll be back at the end of the meeting for my own three minutes.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? No one here? Anything else, Mr. Kaminsky? All right. Next item is correspondence, Mr. Monroe.
I have no correspondence this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Next item is the approval of expenditures. Would someone like to make that motion?
I can make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky.
I move to approve the Avon Lake regional water expenses from January 3rd through January 16th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Schnabel, discussion. Mr. Rush, anything? Mr. Mondello? I do have a comment, you know, not substantive, but formative. Twice, we are continued to second pages with the funds, and I don't think we want to do things like have a header at the bottom of the page with one item, so feel free to, you know, use that extra sheet of paper in the future. It just makes it a little easier for us to review. I don't have any, as I said, substantive problem. We're only, what, 2% through the year, 4%?
Right. And, yeah. Only one check run so far this year, one payroll, they kept checks last Wednesday, so that was really the first expenses of the new.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Logan. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is approved. All right. Let's go on to board committee assignments. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the appointment of Mr. Mondello to the board to fill the remainder of the term for Mr. Abram, it is necessary to adjust committee assignments that were previously approved by the board at our organizational meeting on December 5th of 2023. So, I do have recommended motion. Mr. Ricky has agreed to take on the committee assignment with LARCO, and then that would put Mr. Mondello into the Building and Utilities Committee. So, we do have a recommended motion for that, and I do believe that we need to pass the motion because it was previously moved by.
Mr. Monroe, may I ask, are there any other changes besides the two you highlighted?
They're just on the alternate board seats with, related to Mr. Ricky and Mr. Mondello.
Okay. Would someone like to make the motion and read the table as well?
I can.
Mrs. Schnabel, please do.
Okay. We're reading the entire thing, correct?
I would say so, yeah.
I move to appoint members of the Board of Municipal Utilities to the following committees. For the Committee Wholesale Customers, that will be Mr. Dwanzik, and an alternate board appointee will be Mr. Rush. For Board Compensation, that will be Mr. Dwanzik with an alternate board appointee of Mr. Rush. For LARCO, that will be Mr. Ricky with an alternate board appointee of Mr. Mondello. For Communications, that will be myself, Mrs. Schnabel, with an alternate board appointee of Mr. Mondello. Finance Committee will be Mr. Rush, with the alternate being Mr. Dwanzik. Human Resources, Mr. Rush, with the alternate being Mr. Ricky. Building and Utilities Committee, Mr. Mondello, with the alternate being Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mrs. Schnabel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ricky, discussion. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Okay. 2025 Cleveland Construction Cost Index. Mr. Monroe, tell us the good news and the bad news.
So, as we do annually, we have several of our fees that we recharge are based on the Cleveland Construction Cost Index, and this is to take into account inflation and adjust it appropriately. For the 2025 year, there actually was a 1% decrease from 24 to 25, so the fees will go down slightly. That is memorialized in the memorandum that was included in your board packets. This affects trunk sanitary sewer fee, the trunk sanitary sewer square, square foot charge, the sanitary sewer front foot charge, water impact fee, and the water main front foot square foot charge. As a professional courtesy for the City of Avon Lake Engineering and Public Works Department, we also calculate their cow dip, cow dip fee, the tap-in fee, and we provide that information to them. And that's based on ordinance, just like our trunk sanitary sewer fee, that uses the Cleveland Construction Cost Index to calculate those fees annually. So, we do not need board action on this because it is memorialized in our regulations as well as city ordinance.
So, that was actually my question. Do you update the regulations each year without board action, or does the board act to update the regulations?
When the board acts to update regulations, it is in their, in the language in the regulations is that it will be adjusted annually based on the Cleveland Construction Cost Index. So, there's no official board action that's needed. You acted when you approved the regulations.
So, you're saying that immediately tomorrow, if somebody asking about this, we'll see the new correct rates, and actually, some of them have gone down?
That is correct.
Okay, well, that's a good thing. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, that is it.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Monroe? Okay, well, maybe we whipped inflation now, or whatever, in the words of Jimmy Carter, the late Jimmy Carter. Okay. 2024 year-end financials, Mr. Logan.
Yes, so I provided a little summary of how we ended up for the year. I can get into it as much as you want, or whatever you want on all this, but we've kind of been producing these statements each month throughout the year. Bottom line, if I kind of direct you to the page where it says "all funds," third page in, and you can see that our.
Did you say third page?
Revenue, right, all funds page, revenues, less expenses. Our change in fund balance was a million six forty-two, eight fifty-nine for the 12 months. The first two pages is Fund 701, Fund 721, and then the all funds page. So, the change in fund balance, revenues, less expenses, was a million six forty-two, eight fifty-nine, compared to a budget, a decrease in the budget, 2024 original budget of five million one forty-eight. So, we definitely surpassed the budget by quite a bit, and the big reasons were just really on the expense side, where we came in much less than what was anticipated to be spent. Couple other schedules.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Rush.
Thank you. Just a quick, maybe it's a comment more than a question is, and I want to address it to the board itself, is, you know, we missed our, our expense budget by 30%, or pretty close to 30% there. It behooves us to really put a lot of effort into budgeting, because we're making decisions based on budgets when it comes to rate increases and everything else. And, you know, missing your budget by 30% seems to be a lot to me. I understand that sales are going to change depending on the weather, depending on God, and how much rain and we get or don't get, but expenses we should have a little bit better handle on, I hope, or will try to, because I think down the road, we rely on accurate budgets for moving on as far as rate increases and everything else. That's my comment. Okay?
Mr. Ricky, can you clarify where are you getting that?
Over here. Figure. 24-year-to-date budget. 71% of the budget is what we spent. The budget was 53 million, and we spent 38 million. That's a swing of $15 million.
If I could.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Logan, please.
The largest, the largest variance there, and on the revenue side as well, is we had anticipated the water filtration plant improvement project being about $8 million more, spent more in 2024 than what we did spend. And it's an OWDA reimbursement project, so the revenues are affected equally. So, a little over $8 million.
Of the 15.
Of that 15.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, that just, I'm just looking at the numbers that are in front of me.
No, that's fine.
And again, I think we can do better than 30%, getting our budget, you know, closer than, missing by 30%.
Another effect that I think is maybe around a million and a half to 2 million is what I had mentioned earlier, in that expenses were delayed. The last check run of 2024 was on December 11th, which is usually, that's about a week or a week to 10 days ahead of where, again, this is my first year going through here with Avon Lake, but that's about a week to 10 days ahead of where your final check run for the year ought to be, really more around the 18th or 20th of the month.
A lot of it got pushed, a lot of it got pushed into this year.
So, our first check run of this year, which was just done last week, was pretty much 90, 95% 2024 expenses.
Gotcha.
And that's a million and a half right there, so.
Okay.
That's a part of it as well.
Maybe we need an asterisk there to kind of show that, because like I say, it looks like we didn't do a good job on budgeting, and maybe we did better than I thought.
Again, other expenses really were less than budget for a number of reasons.
Okay. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you. And I just want to clarify and make it very clear that we were not 30% over budget, that we were, we were under budget.
Yeah, 30% under budget.
We were under budget.
Yes, under budget.
Because I think someone misspoke and said over budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I want to make sure we're very clear about that.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's under budget, but again, that just means that, you know, we're looking, looking at budgets.
My point is the same.
Yes, yes.
In my mind, like, I kind of keep track of like where we are all the time, and like, to hear somebody say 30% over budget.
No, 30% under budget. And again, over budget, under budget, both ways, it affects your decision-making.
Right, right. It's not accurate, yeah, it's not accurate.
Thank you.
So, I think it's a point well made. I have, does anyone else have anything to say? I have another formative remark, Mr. Logan. Since we have several sheets like this, would you do us the good turn of numbering the pages so that I won't spend the first, you know, few minutes of discussion hunting around for what is being talked about? Because, you know, I, you can't see it, but I am juggling here.
I will do that.
And so, if you would, whenever you make a packet up, have page numbers so we could at least know which page you're referring to. Okay. Anything else from the board on that? Okay, thank you, Mr. Logan. Let's see, moving on to letter of intent, Mr. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as an update and information item for the board, continue to work with representatives from Lorraine County and LARCO on developing the regional sewer treatment district. And we are moving forward with, with this, and the desire is, you know, we've, we've talked about this publicly in a couple different venues, but regionalized sanitary sewer treatment services in Lorraine County at the lowest cost, and as, take advantage of economies of scale with the masses. So, this is looking at forming the sewer district under Power Revised Code Section 6119. And there will be public meetings that will be coming up shortly, but the next step, one of the next steps for this body would be a letter of intent to enter into agreements with the new entity. So, we hope that we will have that very, very soon at a, one of our upcoming meetings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monroe. Questions from the board? All right, well, I'm glad to see that project is moving along, and from what you have said to me outside of the meeting, it's being well received generally, that's good. All right. Next item is called Project Updates, and it says GKY, but GKY is not here, so I'm going to say R, what is your middle initial?
T.
RTK, you can do it.
Okay, for the, we'll start off with the power plant update. ALRG, return to the site, January 6th, cleaning up from the, from the implosion that happened at the end of December. Specific to the implosion activities from December, preliminary air quality monitoring results from Verdantis indicates that all air quality samples collected were below the permissible limits. The ETL Design Services, engineering staff has reviewed the updated drawings and provided comments to Bram Hall. Bram Hall is working with attorney Connie Carr regarding the updated legal description so easement acquisitions can continue. For the water filtration plant improvements, concrete work continues on the new chemical building structure pillars in anticipation for the precast roof. The former air gap structure has been demolished. That is what the, the picture right there that you're looking at, just to the right was where the old air gap structure was. They tore it out, took them about like three or four days. days. And then, as you can see, they're starting to do the below grade excavations for the four new filters. We have no updates on the schedule.
This is on the south side Lake Road, that last picture?
That last picture, that is on the north side.
What are those buildings? I don't recognize them.
That's the apartments.
Aren't the apartments on the south side?
Yes.
So this is facing south.
Okay.
You're at the east end of the building, facing south.
The Techwin project, the Techwin container was delivered to the project site on December 23rd. The container was unloaded with a crane and placed in the prepared site pad. Staff has installed water and sewer services to the site and first energy has established the necessary electrical. Staff will be currently, will be procuring all necessary electrical components and anticipation of the startup being in the month of March.
Okay, questions from Mr. Kaminsky, Mr. Ricky?
Are we calling permits, I mean, with the city, working with the city as far as?
Yes.
Electrical and they're doing inspections and making sure everything's good? Okay, that's all. I just make sure that we're doing what we require of everybody else.
And then you're overseeing the electrical work?
Yes.
And just like touch it and see if anything happens type of thing?
No, we, Mr. Gadar, Mr. Kaminsky, been working with the electrical engineer that did work for us on our additional storage building so that we make sure that everything is up to code.
We've got stamped and approves and all that, that's what we would want.
Absolutely. Good.
Anything else from the board on that one? I think you might be off the hook, Mr. Kaminsky. Now, Mr. Monroe with the CUE report?
I'm on the hook. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do have a couple items to report on. First item is our 2025 Water Bundle Project that will be going out to bid this Friday. That is going to, big highlight to that, that's going to be 12 streets that are included for waterline replacement work. There's also about 423 water meters that are located inside, indoor meters that have been problematic. We will include that as line item bid to have those moved outside, meter vaults put in outdoors and the new meters. What we're seeing is these are, the timing is right because these are scheduled for replacement because they're having to go back for re-reads and with them being indoor meters, it is problematic. So there was some discussion that Mr. Gadar had with Public Works Director, Mr. Liskovic, regarding their desire to add some streets of paving to, to this project, bundle project because they also may have some storm work that they're going to do as well. So we, it won't slow us up putting it out to bid. We intend to have it out to bid for eight weeks so that we have ample time for contractors to get their pricing in. If we need to add anything, we can do that by addendum. So we're looking forward to getting that out to bid.
Mr. Monroe, on those kinds of projects where the people that live on the streets, lives will be affected for some period of time, what is our process for communicating with the people and letting them know ahead of times they don't just wake up to the sound of, you know, construction equipment outside their bedroom window? What's the plan for that?
So our outreach will be, there will be multiple, multiple levels to that. If we want to talk specifically about the homes that are required to have their, we're going to move their meters outdoors, that's, that would be one form of communication with them. We would do a door hanger and a mailer specifically to them as well as any social media outlets that we have and, you know, the website, newsletter, all of those items. As far as the construction itself, again, we have notified them initially because we had to call in oops tickets for all of these when we had to locate all of the utilities to put on our plan set. So while it was last year, so some may have forgot, we will follow up when, when we put this out to bid of what our tentative schedule will be for awarding the project and what is expected as far as any disruption to the neighbors in that area. Again, we, we try to go door to door to meet, you know, actually speak with residents in the areas, but we will, if we need to, we will utilize social media, robo-calls.
Can you put a notice on the door?
Yes.
For people that don't answer?
We do, we do a door hanger.
Mr. Ricky? Just, do you expect any of these to be on our lead pipe list? I mean, do you think we'll run into any lead service lines in doing these meters?
I don't necessarily anticipate that we're going to run into any lead service lines, but there are some of them that are listed as our nodes. So it will, it will be able to, we will be able to go through some of those.
Take a few of those off the list then. As part of this project, we'll be able to get some off the list. Okay, I just.
And in regard to that, we, we still continue to receive every day a couple surveys from customers that are getting us the information. So we're gradually making slow progress and when weather does break, then we will.
And then are these the new meters we'll be putting in?
Yes.
Since we're doing it, we're going to put the new high-tech?
Yes.
Meter in? Okay.
Anyone else?
Next item I have is related to our Springbrook software, our customer software that we have. We had put a pause on that because of the project manager from Springbrook that we wanted on the project on other projects, so we did, we did pause that. And we are, now that the new year is, is up, we are going to move forward with that. We're looking to go live by the end of March. We are going to have our, that project manager here in person for in-person training with our customer service staff. So we're looking at, we don't know the date yet, but there will be a morning or an afternoon that there may be a disruption to customer service while we're, we're doing that, that changeover and the training. Of course, phones will still be manned, so to speak, by staff, but, and we will communicate to customers when that happens. And last item, I just wanted kudos to all of our operators, all of our distribution collection employees with these frigid temperatures that we've had. We don't want to jinx ourselves. We've had very, very good operational success over the last couple of days, but just want to thank them, you know, all, you know, customer service, answering the calls, you know, and like I said, our, our staff that has to go out in these, these cold temperatures, they've done a great job. So that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Any members with reports at this time? Mr. Ricky?
Yes, I attended the Building and Utilities Committee meeting on the 15th, which would have been last Wednesday night, and it was a rather quick meeting, not too long. The only item that came up, I made a phone call to Mr. Monroe just to remind him that they brought it up about the, it's kind of the horse closing the stall, the stable after the horse is out. We got to get this permit up to speed for the property we now own for the stormwater permit that went from the pond to the 81-inch pipe to the lake. So Mr. Monroe was well aware of what we still needed to do, but I just informed him that that did come up in that meeting and they're looking to get that wrapped up.
Mr. Monroe?
And an update to that, since we did speak the other day, Mr. Gadar and Mr. Larson met today actually with Public Works Director and their staff as they're working through this, so they are making progress and, like I said, we, we own the property and we want to make sure that everything is in order.
Okay. Any questions on that from anyone? Okay, any other board members with miscellaneous or otherwise? Hearing none, we'll close that item. Mr. Kaminsky, do you have any comments from cyber world?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mosher, if you'd like to return to the microphone?
Mr. Dwanzik. In 2023, Rob, Greg, and Bobby apparently handed the matter of my employment issues over to the City of Avon Lake Human Resources Department Head, Mary Sworke, who began the systematic process of conspiring with them and others to terminate my employment under the guise of personal concern by managers first John Christopher and later Jason Gibney and admin, of course, Rob, Greg, and Bobby. In the recordings of these meetings that I have, Mary can clearly be heard stating that I had done nothing wrong, but there was a concern that she didn't think I was happy enough at work. And from there, a series of events took place that led to some sort of justification in their minds to call for my termination, which is why I am here today and I will, I will continue to return. In my tenure as an, as an employee of the City of Avon Lake, in the public service of the Avon Lake Municipal Utilities Department and an entity unfortunately now known as Avon Lake Regional Water, I have seen, heard, smelled, and felt many things that didn't seem right, fair, safe, or reasonable. And I look forward to sharing those stories and events with the board and the public over the next year or so. Today, I contend that Avon Lake Regional Water and the City of Avon Lake has conspired against me personally in a manner that has left me unemployable in the field of water filtration and beyond. Over the last half decade, the board has expressed numerous questions about how difficult it seems to find competent water plant operators. And as Mr. Monroe has indicated, CUE is not alone. Elirian, Lorraine, and Cleveland have also found it difficult to find good help. So upon my termination from Avon Lake Regional Water, I thought it would only be a short matter of time before one of these other entities picked me up at a substantially reduced hourly rate and my life would move on. But no, it appears that somehow I have been marked as persona non grata. So desperate as they are for competent employees, no one will hire me. Surprisingly, after a very long application process and a tentative placement with Cleveland a few months back, the offer was rescinded for unknown reasons and all communication from them ceased after enthusiastic exchange with managers and staff and tentative welcome to the ranks. Thank you, and I look forward to sharing more with you next time.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Anyone else? Comments? Okay, we have a requested executive session to discuss pending or imminent court action with no expected formal action following the executive session. Would someone like to make the motion?
Yes, Mr. Monroe.
Mr. Rush?
I move to meet an executive session as allowed by Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22 G3 to discuss pending or imminent court action and to include the CUE, the business and financial coordinator, and a representative from Manzor Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Rush.
We add facilities and asset manager to that.
And I'd like to amend my motion to add the facilities and asset manager to the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Schnabel. This will be, first of all, is there any discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Ricky?
Yes.
Mrs. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Mondello?
Yes.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Thank you all for attending tonight. Once the room is cleared, we will enter into executive session. Thank you, Officer Riggs, for your attendance.